Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
And with that, I didn't even introduce myself. So I'm Matt Rusk, I am the budget chair. And with that, we'll go ahead and we'll get going. Terry?
With that said, would we be allowed to suspend the rules if anybody else is willing to speak? Or if anybody else here today wants to speak, we'd like to know and I'd like to suspend the rules to allow anybody to come up here to speak.
These aren't rules. This is a rule of court, this is state statute. And because the state statute says you have to have five days notice, there has to be five days notice. Now, I think there will be another meeting that is held where we'll have our normal of speaking rules, it's not governed by statute, but that can't happen.
I just wanted to say, thank you. So I'll just kind of walk through real quick, agenda-wise. So today, of course, at nine, we've got this bubble period. Tomorrow, the 24th, school meets at six, to go through, looking at third budget. And then on the 26th, is that now?
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, the school? Schools meeting?
Our full commission.
Yeah, go ahead, start going next. But I think the schools meeting is going over. And then we have full commission on Thursday, which is the 26th. And that's where we'll meet here at 5 o'clock to vote, we're on this right here. So that's kind of the agenda of what we've got set up for today. What's happening, school meeting on Tuesday, and then the full commission will be meeting on Thursday. So with that, I'll pass over to Beth, and we'll just, Graham, would you mind keeping time?
Sure.
Like I said, in the paper, it was written that there are three minutes. You'll have five minutes. If you don't need that time, you can yield it, but after five, Graham will let you know how your five minutes is up, and then we'll just go to the next person right there. Adele, did you have some?
I was just gonna say, if, you know, they're facing me, I'll go like this, at 15 seconds.
Okay, so Adele's our newsletter timer?
No, I'm not saying I need to be a timekeeper, I'm just saying if...
I'll give you a signal.
This side will come through and we'll do that right there.
You can wait signal.
We'll let you know when you're ready. We'll get y'all here and I'll pass it over to Beth and we'll announce and let everybody speak at this time.
Okay, our first, Ms. Cheryl Albury.
And this is basically to the commissioners, because a lot of you have seen me at the meetings. So I've talked to a lot of people out there in the public. They cannot afford as big of a tax raise as you want. And one thing of concern is EMS has raised their budget from the 23 audit. They got $800,000. This year, they're asking for another over $700,000. I live in Audenmore. We have a south station down there that was given to us by the city of Audenmore, so it costed taxpayers nothing, yet it's not fully staffed. Richland Station on the north, people got together and raised funds to build that station so they would have coverage. It's not fully staffed. It cost the county nothing. The only one that's costing the county was the main station. Yes, there are some repairs that need to be made to that main station. Some of the things that have been brought up is people are having to co-sleep. And I know I'm not a math teacher, but there are seven beds in that station. So if you take and you're running two trucks out of there, that's four people. If you're running three trucks, one the supervisor, and then you have to have somebody with him, that's six people. The supervisor has his own room. So if you have two trucks with two males and two females, that's one room. And then your odd person out has the other room by themselves. So there's no reason for anybody to have to be co-sleeping. However you divide the numbers up, everybody can still, same sex can share the room. The trip to London, I know that's been a big controversy. It was stated in two different meetings that that was paid for out of a grant, that wasn't paid for out of a grant. They did get some grants, but it was not for the trip to London. It took budget money to do that. London is a socialized medicine. We cannot do that to our people here. If you go in as an EMS worker and you see that somebody needs to have home health, you can't settle them up with home health. That has to be a doctor's order. And some of the stuff I know because I was a first responder before, I know it's been years ago, but I'm also a nurse. So the medical part of it, I do understand. I won't get into some of the other stuff that I have found out, but to their budget, they say they'll have 40 employees, they want $3 million. Their budget for the employees they have, they're asking this year is over a million dollars, and they're asking for $888,000 for overtime. If you're fully staffed, you shouldn't have to have that much overtime. And they're saying, oh, well, we're gonna get paramedics. They have one paramedic in school right now, an EMT that's in school to become a paramedic. Okay, you have to pass your classes, and then you have to pass your national test. They've got three EMTs that are gonna go to paramedic school next year. Well, that's gonna be a year, and then you've still gotta pass your classes and take your state test. Then they say they have two more that they're talking to from other states. They're on a 24-on-72 off because of fatigue, and I understand the fatigue, because some nights, especially full moon nights, you run yourself crazy. It does affect people. But when they leave here, because they can't get enough money here, and they go to another county and work, they're still fatigued. So to use that as an excuse, and anybody, I'll, just to say this, it's been said that I have said some stuff, and that everything that I've got, I have paperwork to back it. Before I said something, I wouldn't have gotten the paperwork, and I have researched. So anybody that wants to talk to me, let me know. My time's up.
You've got 30 seconds.
Okay. And as far as the road department, I can't tell you anything about Jean personally, or anything like that, but my question on that is, if you got grants last year, and you did 30 miles of road, but yet you're not getting grants this year and wanting to do 70, what happens to the other money? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albury.
Next is Ms. Marty Haiti. Mrs. Haiti?
I'm not saying we're here. Beth, I'm not saying we're here.
Okay. So, back to the record, Mrs. Haiti, who's not pregnant. Right, Mrs. Leah Bailey?
I do not support the proposed 28% property tax increase. There are many reasons why, but the first is that there are no protections for the elderly who may not be able to afford this increase. Secondly, it was said in the Saturday meeting, almost half our budget deficit is for the highway department to make up for the state shortfall due to the floods and road repairing in East Tennessee. If it is true that the highway department cannot be funded lower than the average of the past five years, and the county raises the amount we contribute significantly to make up the shortfall by the state, does that mean that the future average the county has to contribute to the highway department will be based on this figure, even if the state begins contributing funding again? If so, it seems to me that passing this would raise the average the county has to give the highway department forever. That could be millions every year. Concerns that came up at the Saturday meeting included a department purchasing a new vehicle, conflicts of interest tomorrow. The commissioners didn't appear to be aware of the new vehicle purchase. If it even happened, it was probably included in a broad line item. I think the broad line items are too limited in information to aid in decision-making. I don't, let's look in detail at what they spent last year as a better plan for the years to come, and make it clear. I'm continually met with resistance about the public having access to more detailed information. I don't understand. And asking each person in the county to contact Beth with a question or submit a FOIA request seems like a waste of time and resources. Why not make the information the county has available to all who live here? I believe, Grant Stowe mentioned on Saturday, that we can do something akin to a continuing resolution that will temporarily fund the departments following the previous year's budget. Please vote no, and send this back to the budget committee to question this year's proposed budget again. Picture the family who's going to have to leave this county for a more affordable one. The single mother who won't be able to feed her child, and the elderly or disabled individual who's going to lose their home or have to sell their farm, especially after the next property assessment, which I believe is next year. In regards to any additional funding over last year's budget, question the department heads, do a deep dive into their historical line items, what they asked for in previous years, and what they actually spent the money they received on before providing additional funding. That's what I feel the public is asking for. Finally, it was also brought up that the commissioners can't say how the departments use their funds. I understand that completely, but the commissioners are responsible for the budget and allocating the funds. They can vote against providing even more money to departments that history shows by reviewing previous year's expenses and actual spending decisions in detail do not need and/or deserve additional funding. You are the stewards of our tax money. You have the power to represent us. Please use it on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Next is Mr. Scott Bailey.
Just wanted to say I'm not a political person. This is the first time I've ever spoken to anybody about anything like this, so I'm probably not gonna do very well. But one of the things I think everybody should consider is, we're talking about increases to 28%, we are gonna have a property assessment. That is gonna be higher. Inflation of property has went up quite a bit in my area, and I'm sure it has all over Giles County. That will be in addition to 28%. So you could be up as high as, I don't know, 40, 45% tax increase on the people in this county. That is really, really gonna be hard. I would venture to say...
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Next is Mr. Scott Bailey.
Just started to say I'm not a favorable person. This is the first time I've ever spoke to anybody about anything like this, so it's probably not going to do very well. But one of the things I think everybody should consider is, we're talking about increasing this 28%, we are going to have a property assessment. That is going to be higher. Inflation of property has went up quite a bit in my area, and I'm sure it has all over Giles County. That will be in addition to 28%. So you could be up as high as, I don't know, 40, 45% tax increase on the people in this county. That is really, really going to be hard. I would venture to say that all you commissioners are doing an excellent job in trying to help the county as much as you possibly can. I really do appreciate that. I don't have the time to do this. I couldn't come up here and do this. I have to work. I wouldn't have the time to commit to this. And it's a big sacrifice for y'all to do that. I really do appreciate that. And I know you probably heard a lot of stuff, foreign handouts, that it can be very aggravating. So I do appreciate that. I want you to know that part. But the people did elect you to try to represent them, and I hope that you would look and think that in your position now, maybe $300, $500 doesn't hurt you. Maybe you can spend that, and it doesn't matter. There was one in my life where $200 or $300 made a big difference. I mean, it made a big difference. Maybe some of y'all went through that, but there is a point in people's lives where $200 or $300 really matters. Don't just think about your spot in your financial aspects. There are elderly people that that will really, really matter. There are people that may be disabled or have problems, that that will really matter. Take that into consideration when you make your decisions. See if there are things we can put. It seems like there's a lot of questions Saturday about things that may haven't been gone over in detail the way they should be, and maybe we can find some clues. Please delay this. Try to operate on the existing budget as long as we can. We got COVID, we had a lot of things happen here recently that's hurt a lot of people, and this is just in addition to it. In a time like this, is this a time to double the amount of roads we're going to pay? Is this a time to increase EMS we're going to do? Or is this a time maybe to hold back, and we'll do some pottos, we'll do a little passion, and we'll do a little less for a short period of time anyway, just to figure everything out? Once again, I really appreciate y'all's help. I appreciate the commissioners' time and sacrifices. Thank you very much.
That is everyone, that is follow the protocol, we'll plug it out on the list. With that, Graham, have you got anything, or Mr. Williams to add to or to say with that?
I'll just share. So there may be people here that didn't know about the five-day requirement for speaking. Like Matt was saying, the full commission meeting meets on Thursday. You do not need to make any advance notice to speak at that. So Thursday at 5:00 p.m., there's always a section at the beginning of the meeting for public comments. All you have to do is show up. You get five minutes at the podium if you'd like to speak there. I know the commissioners are fielding a lot of phone calls. Signs are out. I think I know where a lot of people stand, and just let your commissioners know how you'd like them to vote. It has swayed voters in the past on different issues, and that's the way you get the representation you voted for.
Thank you. Terry, and then we'll go Gail.
Once we adjourn this meeting, we have the right, we want to sit here and let anybody, once we adjourn, anybody wanting to speak, they could, to speak to the commissioners if they want to stick around. That's after the meeting and-
So I think, I think what's going to happen is, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and then if you want to say informally, I'm available, yeah, I mean, you can certainly do that.
I'm going to stick around. I know a few others are going to stick around. If anybody feels like they want to come up and speak today, I've got no problem with that. If any commissioners wants to leave, that's on your own.
Well, on that point, there's other commissioners that have jobs, and if they leave, it doesn't mean that they don't care. So if you're, if you're available and can stick around, that's great.
This is- Gail?
On Thursday, this room may be a little small. And I know that in the past, there have been times when full commission has met in the opposite courtroom. Could we consider doing that? Because, you know, even in a budget meeting, we had, we were, we had too many people here because we were over the limit as far as fire marshal was concerned. And there's a lot more room over there. Could y'all consider, Graham, have it over there?
The only thing I'm not sure about is whether a voting software will work over there, but I'll look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, there's four commissioners just not here. I don't know about three of them, but one of them is real sick. And more than likely, if he'd have been here, he couldn't have got up here because he couldn't have found a place apart. Tim Rader is real, real sick. He told me last night that he was planning on being here. He's got a good excuse for not being here. Just wanted people to know that.
We need to continue to keep them in our prayers. Look, last thing that I'll, that I'll just kind of word, from the department heads to our employees, to this commission, I mean, this isn't something that would just happen stance and come through, and this is the first time we're here. And we've been deliberating and talking about this for days, weeks, months, in preparation of looking at this. We've got some tough and hard decisions to make. I appreciate everybody's presence here today, and with that, we adjourn. Thank you.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
No, this is not a meeting.